All the meetings order at 7:24 PM of the regular city council meeting and state that the notice was duly posted and we do have a quorum of city council. Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. We'll have our planning and planning manager and development services, Karen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivi- with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, our presentations and recognitions. Three A, presentation by council member Lynn Clauser.
Would the following Fort Bend ISD educators please come forward? Maria Rincon, World Language Teacher of the Year at Quail Valley Middle School. Y'all, let's give her a round of applause. Adele Hafid Mahir, Secondary English as a Second Language Teacher of the Year at Lake Olympia Middle School. Cassandra Durst, Elementary English as a Second Language Teacher of the Year at Palmer And Miriam Vasquez, Bilingual Teacher of the Year at Ridge Gate Elementary. Why are these dynamic educators standing in front of you today? Each year, the Suburban Houston Association for Bilingual Education, or SHABE, whose mission is to promote educational opportunities and recognition for bilingual and ESL teachers with a dedication to teachers so that English language learners names the Teachers of the Year in various school districts. Four of these multilingual program honorees are not only in Fort Bend ISD, but three of them are right here in Missouri City, Texas. I'm Missouri City proud, I don't know about you. I did not want to leave out our neighboring schools honoree, Ms. Vasquez, as I'm all about inclusion and all of these teachers are as well. Ms. Mayor, Ms. Rincon, Ms. Durst, and Ms. Vasquez have demonstrated excellence in their classrooms and deliver outstanding service to the education of bilingual and English as second language students each and every day. Each one of you will receive a proclamation. These ladies were honored by SHABE as the Bilingual Teachers of the Year in Fort Bend County, and this is such an honor. And so I wanted to recognize them. As the daughter and granddaughter of educators, I understand how important your profession is, but going a little bit further, English as a second language, wow, you've got a lot of challenges, but you have excelled in each one of those. So each one of you will get a proclamation, and that proclamation will state, whereas through our dedicated efforts to ensure our children acquire the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in life, teachers are vital in building the future. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to skip to the end. Now therefore I, Lynn Clauser, council member of Missouri City, Texas, acknowledge Abdi Hafid, Maria Rincon, Cassandra Durst, and Miriam Vasquez as English as Second Language Teachers of the Year at their schools and encourage all citizens to congratulate them as one of Texas's finest educators. Y'all, let's give them another round of applause. If you all have family members that are here or your principals that are here, they can come up and join you for a picture. We have the principal of Palmer Elementary, Ms. Clay, do we have principal over here? Okay, family members? Okay, awesome. Thank you for all you do.
All right, Mayor Alakat has stepped away from the dais and we'll continue with our regular city council meeting. Item three E, we'll have another presentation by council member Ashandra Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. I also would like to acknowledge and recognize a wonderful educator who has committed his life to serving the youth in our community. Please come up, Mr. Enoch Brown III. All right, I would read the words of this proclamation, but I would like to speak from the heart. I've watched this young man grow up to be an astounding educator within our community, being a product of all three Fort Bend schools, including the wonderful Thurgood Marshall High School here. Yes, he's a bug. And to actually come back and serve within the community that he was born and raised in as a native Missouri City resident, that's an outstanding accomplishment for me and for the residents that have you. So also, he's dedicated his life to being a teacher at Lake Olympia Middle School, which I was actually able to graduate from. So again, this is very personal to me and I want to make sure that he receives his flowers while he's still able to smell them. And so again, Mr. Brown has dedicated eight years of his life to teaching at Lake Olympia Middle School, where he also mentor and coach the kids to make sure that they have great life skills, leaderships, and they're able to be productive members of society. And also in his free time, he has dedicated his life again to making sure he brings acknowledgement to type one diabetes. And so within that, that's a whole scope of a wonderful, great man who continues to be a great asset to our youth, our community, and most importantly, Missouri City, Texas. So I just want to grant you, under my leadership, this wonderful proclamation and give you your flowers, like I mentioned, and thank you for your service to our youth.
Thank you to the city of Missouri City. I thank you to my family, friends, my coworkers and colleagues for all coming out to honor me during this very special moment in time. I'll keep this real short and simple. I have a simple education philosophy, that is that the legacy that you leave for tomorrow starts with the youth that you inspire today. And so in following, I don't know if it's a family practice or a family tradition, I don't know if it's the 70-plus years that my parents have spent in education, I don't know if it's watching my sister do the same thing and the same walk in life in education, but giving back to the youth of tomorrow is what's going to help us grow as one together. The amazing teachers that I've had throughout the years, K through 12, even in college and even in my postgraduate years, have all helped me to get to this very moment and point where I am today. And I hope to continue to set and blaze a trail for other young men and other young ladies who not only look just like me, but look like all of you out there so that they can come back one day and empower their community and enlighten their community in such ways that I have. I thank you all. I thank the city. I thank all parties on hand for taking this moment to recognize me for all the things that I've done, and I continue and pray and hope that I'm able to make more history each and every day. Thank you all. My family and friends, if you all want to come up and take a little photo. I have my principal, Ms. Courtney Clark here as well, future Dr. Courtney Clark here as well. So if my family and friends would want to come up and do a small photo op, we can. Thank you all again.
Congratulations.
Councilwoman Edwards, Mr. Brown taught my son. And yes, and so I just have to say it, if you don't mind me chiming in, my son is on the autism spectrum, and many of you may or may not know, that's a very interesting disability to teach, and not too many teachers embraced him, but Mr. Brown did, and he was one of Marshall's favorite teachers. So I just wanted to chime in and say thank you. That's all right.
We'll move on to item four, public comments. Before we go to public comments, I want to welcome our new city secretary, Crystal Rone, on her first day. Let's everybody give her a round of applause. Did the city receive any comments, public comments?
Yes, we have. The first is at.
Well, before you call them up, as your name is called, please step to the podium, state your name and address before beginning your presentation, and observe a three-minute time limit. The city secretary will keep track of your time and alert you when you have reached your time limit. First public comment.
Tori Owens.
Wow, appreciate that. That don't happen every day. My name is Tori Owens, I'm a resident at 3103 Confederate South Drive, and recently on neighboring street Confederate South, Confederate Drive was changed to Prosperity. And I want to just acknowledge the council member, the mayor, pro-council, and all the people working behind the scenes for the community to make change. And despite those that make that we can't walk, can't chew gum at the same time, while we acknowledge history that was correct, is to acknowledge history and make things right. So I'm glad to report that I have obtained 70% of my street Confederate South Drive petitioned, neighbors have signed. I'm going to encourage other members in my community, Vicksburg, to also begin to get involved and make the change that we see, have made the history that was wrong, help make it right.
Thank you.
I turn it back over to Mayor Alakat.
Any other public comments?
We do have other public comments. Marsha Willis.
Good afternoon. My name is Marsha Willis. I live at 3306 Confederate Court, and this is my next door neighbor Kathleen, and she is on Confederate Court, and we have other neighbors from Confederate Court. So what you've heard tonight prior to me was someone that was on Confederate South, because the street is actually like a U, okay? And the portion of the street that has already changed is the longer part. So who you have presenting to you tonight are the either ends, right? So our street, we have collected 94% of the homeowners have agreed to change our names. It was last June and July, Kathleen and I basically walked to every house. We would get a neighbor and said, okay, you know this neighbor, so go with us, you know? And this was the technique that Rhonda and her husband both did, so we were just using the same technique. We didn't invent anything new, but we just wanted to come. So you can see more people who have a great concern about the demeaning characteristic that this street has caused for us. I've lived on that street for 29 years, and every time I have to tell someone that my address is Confederate Court, it sends this eerie feeling through my body. So we are coming back. This is a preamble to when we request for an item on your agenda, and we will be presenting the name of our proposed street as well, because we had a meeting Saturday, and we all agreed upon the name. We're going to go with the majority, and we'll present that at whatever time we get time on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
I'm Karen Martin, and I live in Colony Crossing, which is on the other side of 90, and I have three concerns tonight. Highway Gessner from Highway 90 all the way up to Beltway 8 needs to be restripped, and it also need to have the reflectors in it, because whether 18-wheelers are coming out of all those business parks, there's a safety hazard, like tonight when I'm coming, you can't see the line where you're supposed to be in the line. And as I cross over 90 into the real Missouri City on this side by Fifth Street, you can see the black, the white, and the reflector. So with all those Benny Keith and people coming out, FedEx now, we are having a safety hazard in the evening when it gets dark. You cannot see your lane, and I don't know if they said enough how they can't see us or not, but that's a safety hazard that we're having. And we had also asked last year for more lighting down Gessner between 90, all the way to Beltway 8 to the Missouri City Marquee, because also maybe the lighting would help them see more, I don't know, but on both sides of the street, there's a dark area between Craven, Gessner, and I know you all know what I'm talking about. And thirdly, the railroad tracks at Gessner and 90, when are you going to get with the railroad commission? That's been a problem for over the past year. It doesn't like, and we tired of, I'm tired of my tires getting tore up. They don't have their problem in funding and the railroad track on 90, neither farther down at here, but this particular one, we have a lot of traffic, but the railroad needs to fix that. And if you could take care of those three things, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Someone from Public Works wants to meet with them.
That does conclude public comments for items that are not on the agenda. We do have one public comment for agenda item 11C.
Was that received before 7 AM, seven, before we start the meeting?
It was received after.
Okay, we can't. So we have that, where all these forms has to be received prior to it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item number five, there are no staff reports. Item number six, our consent agenda, is there a motion?
Motion to brew.
Second.
It's been a motion by council member Emery, second by council member Clauser. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries 7-0. Item number seven is public hearing and related actions. Seven A is zoning, public hearing, and ordinances.
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, changing the zoning classification of 0.82 acres of land from LC2 Local Retail District to PD Planned Development District, describing said 0.82 acres of land, regulating and restricting the development and use of property within such PD Plan Development District, amending the zoning district map of the city of Missouri City, providing for an amendment to the comprehensive plan, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Thank you. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second? I didn't hear who that was.
Clauser.
It's been a motion by council member Clauser, second by council member Riley. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries 7-0. Is there a discussion? Is there any, anyone signed up? Okay, so city did not receive any public comment request, so is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion, we close public hearing.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been a motion by council member Riley, second by council member Clauser. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries 7-0. Is there a motion on this reading, on the first reading?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Mayor Proton Marulus, second by, I mean, Mayor Proton Boni, second by council member Riley. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Item number eight, our appointments, there are no appointments on this agenda. Item number nine, our authorizations, item number nine A, consider awarding a contract for engineering design services for Mustang Bayou Service Area Utilities Collection and Distribution Systems. There's been a presentation by Todd Hoover, who's our Assistant Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item before you pertains to the utilities capacity needs in the Mustang Bayou Service Area due to the tremendous growth which presents a significant economic development opportunity to our city. With this growth comes the demand of water and sanitary sewer capacity and reliability. To meet this demand, new sanitary sewer gravity pipes, lift stations, and water distribution pipes must be designed and constructed. This item is the start of those utility design phase services. It's estimated that the Mustang Bayou Service Area will require over $30 million in needed collection and distribution pipes, lift stations, to support the projected growth over the next 10 years. The included scope of work in your packet identifies the estimated design phase services cost to be over $3 million, and an estimated cost for the construction of those infrastructures over the next three years to be about $18 million. City staff's recommendation is that we move forward with a professional services agreement for amount not to exceed 1.5 million to quickly get the design efforts moving. This amount will be funded by the 1.9 million in American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds that were approved by council on February the 7th. City staff solicited a request for qualifications on December 20th, 2021. We received 15 responses. A staff evaluation committee evaluated the packets, and we shortlisted three firms based on their qualifications. Staff then presented the recommendation to the Planning Development Infrastructure Council Subcommittee on February the 9th, 2022. All this information is provided in your packet. Lastly, with the residual $400,000 in funds left over from those funds I'd mentioned earlier, the staff will may come back to council to address additional phases of utility design phase services. So I'll gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved it up.
Second.
It's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by council member Clauser. Is there a discussion?
Mayor has stated, this did come before our PDI committee and was unanimously approved.
Thank you. All right, hearing no other discussions, there's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by council member Clauser. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Item number nine B, consider authorizing the additional funding required to complete the original project approved for council chamber technology upgrade. We have a presentation by Cedric Coe, who's our CIO, Chief Information Officer.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here today seeking authorization for the council chamber technology project. This was originally approved in March 2021. Staff went back and looked at a need assessment for the whole entire project and came up with a defined scope. With that, we met with a buy board vendor, we're going to buy the equipment and get it sourced in a timely manner. With the quote, it came up to approximately 160,000 to complete the project. We looking at about four to six months for completion of the project.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we go with staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been a motion by council member Marulus, second by Mayor Proton Boni, is there a discussion?
Yes, Cedric, could you talk about buy board? And I see we have a significant amount of savings as we were initially looking to spend, and I see it's 100, some odd thousand dollars. Can you speak about buy board and that process and how we were able to save so much money?
So the state usually go out and utilize vendors under a state contract, and with that we save fundings and utilize their savings as well.
About how much money did we end up saving?
Roughly 140,000.
That end your question?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, did I hear you say it's going to be four to six months?
Correct.
Before we have the chambers ready to occupy?
Yes, sir. Still due to the chipset, in delayed, and some of the technology in delay because of the chipset.
Cedric, what is the status on the Swagged Live Stream Production Technology Cameras that were removed during production or construction, I'm sorry? And are those wires and cables still in the walls or just provide us with an update on that?
So what we're going to do, we're going to, we still have the cameras, but we're going to utilize new cabling and place them inside the council chambers, and also we're going to put one outside the council chambers as well.
Okay, are those IP addresses that were attached to those, are they still active?
We own our IP addresses, so we got, we can create IP addresses, we own them.
No, I'm just asking about those specific ones that were utilized for that particular livestream. Are they inactive or are they just?
They're active because we're using Swagged as we speak right now to communicate back of our live recording.
Okay. All right, I do have some more questions. Does the technology solutions that you are recommending connect to the Swagged production?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to keep on moving with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And will the voting system be implemented? How would that look?
Yes, ma'am. You'll have a screen, it's roughly about a 15-inch screen, where you just sit there on the dais and select vote yes or no. It will also stream throughout the whole entire displays inside of the council chambers.
Okay. And what's the price on the cables, I guess?
The pricing?
Yes.
I think it was roughly 17,000 to wire everything, including the voting system.
Okay. And what funding will we be using to pay for this?
Pig fund.
The pig fund. The pig fund. So how would the, can you walk me through how the cameras will be set up? Um, will it be like this or?
No, they actually will be mounted on into the wall. It's usually displayed, um, direction, dais, and the audience inside. And also, we are including, um, video conferencing solutions that we didn't have before. And also microphones, we'll have teleconferencing as well. And it would be tied back into the Swagga system and to our production system.
Any other questions? We have a motion by Councilmember Marulus, second by Mayor Proton Boni. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the mo- motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number 10, our ordinances. Item 10A.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 34 Finance and Taxation of the Missouri City Code, authorizing a reimbursement fee for the processing of fees, fines, court costs, or other charges paid by credit card, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Elena Portis, our Director of Financial Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I go into staff's recommendation proposal, wanted to outline how this meets some of the areas of your strategic plan. A part of your strategic plan is a strategic focus area that's maintain a financially sound city government. And within that focus area, you have a primary objective of, uh, being financially sound through services. And in that area, there are two elements, and this item addresses two of those elements. The first being identifying opportunities to change processes to better place citizens at the center. And the second being identifying opportunities to enhance revenue generation or collections that are consistent with the organizational values. And so this item is proposing a credit card processing fee. Uh, we are in the process of going live with our customer self-service where uh, customers will be able to pay for our solid waste, um, their, pay their solid waste payments online. But that will incur an additional credit card processing fee. And so we'll have the ability for them to pay online instead of coming in or mailing in. Um, and we'll also be able to generate the revenue to basically pass through the fee that the city pays for credit cards. Uh, the local government code, Chapter 132, gives the city the ability to accept credit card payments. We do currently accept credit card payments. There's another section of the code that authorizes us to set a processing fee to be able to recoup our costs in regards to credit card processing. Um, the law also states that the fee may not exceed 5% of the charge that's being paid. And in the proposed ordinance, we have the credit card processing fee at 3%. Uh, we currently pay interchange fees of 3.2%, so it's not, uh, 100% cost recovery. Little bit of history in our credit card fees. 2018, our budget was approximately 36,000 with expenses of 30,000. And that has grown, uh, in 2021, our budget was 63,500. And we actually spent 117,000. So we had to use savings in other areas to be able to pay for the credit card fees. Um, at one time, we, in the Financial Services Department, submitted, um, a supplemental request to be able to pay for credit cards. But at that time, we discussed, let's implement, attempt to implement a credit card fee so that the, uh, general public is not paying for, uh, credit cards. So just a little bit as far as fiscal year 2021, the total amount of credit cards that were processed, the volume, uh, was 3.7 million. But for an example, we had one transaction that was 54,300 that was in permits where the city paid 1,466 dollars in fees just for this one developer. Uh, you may be wondering what our other cities doing. Uh, staff within our Treasury Division, uh, they, they called other cities to find out how much they're charging, if they are charging. Uh, and as far as the rates, the highest rate that's being charged is 3%. And that is with the City of Arcola, Beasley, Folscher, Rosenberg. It does decrease from there, and that is, you know, based on what the cities have authorized, um, in those areas. And then there are some cities that don't, um, charge a fee at all. So, just in summary, the proposed ordinance will set the credit card processing fee at 3%. This is estimated to save the city approximately $60,000 per year. The amount of funds that we do have budgeted will continue to be used to pay for credit card fees. The amount that exceeds 3% plus the cost of equipment and other association fees that were required to pay. Um, if we do not have a, a new fee, we would require an additional appropriation of 60, approximately $60,000 per year to cover the rising costs, um, including the future costs associated with the ability to process more online transactions. That ends my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Emery, second by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Elena. Item 10B.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 30 Environment of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding discharges to the municipal separate stormwater system, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
We have a presentation by Ashashi Kumar, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This will be very short. What you have in front of you is an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the city's Code of Ordinances, which pertains to regulating municipal stormwater discharges. These are minor amendments. There's a packet in front of you showing what those amendments are, and they're very minor in nature. With that, I recommend, uh, adopting this ordinance and amending Chapter 30 of the, uh, city's Code of Ordinances.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Ashashi?
Yes. Want to keep it short and sweet.
You shocked me because I looked down. Um, no, I'm just kidding. Um, although, I mean.
I move that we amend the.
Yeah, I need a motions.
I move that we amend the, uh, Chapter 30 of our ordinance.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Ashashi. Item number. Say, is there?
MC?
Yeah.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending criteria and procedures for the consideration of certain economic development projects within Missouri City, Texas.
All right, we have a presentation by Aubrey Knowles, our Executive Director of Economic Development.
Good evening. A few weeks ago, I brought an item before council explaining the expansion to the boundaries of the Texas Parkway Cartwright Road Corridor. Previously, the boundaries were on Texas Parkway from US 90A to Cartwright Road and on Cartwright Road from Texas Parkway to Dulles Avenue. The mayor, with the recommendation of the Texas Parkway Cartwright Road Advisory Committee, agreed to expand the boundaries to Texas Parkway within the city limits and Cartwright Road within the city limits as well. This item would allow the boundaries of the facade improvement program that we adopted late last year to be expanded as well.
That's it. All right. Thank you. Is there a motion?
If I may, before acting on this motion, this does fall under your rules and requires, uh, five votes to take the item up because the 90 day timeframe has expired, so you do need, uh, a motion.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to consider this within 90 days.
Second.
To reconsider the item.
To reconsider the item within a 90 day period.
Is that your second?
Second.
And so there's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Klaus. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Aubrey. Um, last time we spoke, I asked about the canvassing, um, of the corridor. How did that go out, go for you?
It went, it went well. We, um, had a mixer that was coming up. And so as we were canvassing for the mixer along the corridor, we also handed out flyers for the facade program. I think that expanding the corridor will, for the facade program, will be very helpful as well.
Any feedback from, um, the property owners or did you just speak with, um, the tenants?
We were primarily just speaking with tenants, but they were really excited about it and said that they would relay the information on to the property owners. And so we thought that was a great opportunity that we were able to take advantage of.
Do you have any new?
Mayor, point of order. I'm just asking because we can talk about that on the agenda item and question, but we can't really have discussion on this item because we have to take it back up. So can we make that vote first and then come back to that agenda item?
I'm not able to follow up on my previous questions.
No, yes, you will. I'm saying on the actual agenda item, we have to actually suspend the rules to be able to consider this item for discussion.
So we have a motion by Mayor Proton Boni and second by Councilmember Klaus. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. So.
So now, um, now, now we, we can make the motion to, I make a motion to, uh, approve the ordinance.
A second.
All right, there's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion?
Yes, Aubrey. I just wanted to know what businesses that you canvassed. I can just get a visual in my head and kind of follow up with that.
Sure. It was primarily, um, all along Texas Parkway, we went right across the street. And where Ford Delicious is, we went along Grand Park. We also went to the shopping center where, um, there's a hair salon, um, remember where it is off the top of my head, but it's right adjacent on the other side of Dairy Queen on Texas Parkway. And, but we went all the way down the corridor. We hopped over to, uh, Cartwright and started walking down that side as well where Foodarama is and walked down to where Alex's Kitchen is located as well.
And so you're getting feedback from all of the property owners. Is anyone left out? Or just not willing to participate?
Not that I know of, but I, I'm not sure of anyone that in particular that has been left out of the program.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So there's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Riley. There are no other discussions. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Item 11, 11A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, declares the city's intention to reimburse the cost of certain expenditures from the proceeds of general obligations to be issued for road improvements and any items related thereto.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Emery, second by Councilmember Klaus. Is there, you have a presentation?
I do not have a formal presentation, but I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, is there a discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute on the city secretary to attest an economic development agreement between the City of Missouri City, Texas and MHL USA Holdings LLC pertaining to certain improvements to an approximately 6.44 acre tract of land located in the City of Missouri City, Texas pursuant to the Texas Parkway Cartwright Road Facade Improvement Program.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thanks.
Okay. It's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Klaus. Uh, is there a discussion?
I would like, I would like, uh, Aubrey to.
Aubrey, go ahead.
Okay, this is the first application to make it through the entire process. And it's Quail Valley Plaza, which is located at Cartwright Road and Socrates Point Drive. The facade improvement program is for Texas Parkway and Cartwright Road, and it was adopted late last year. The council has agreed to reimburse eligible facade improvements for up to 75% of their cost with a maximum reimbursement of $200,000. The application was first reviewed by an internal review committee, which consisted of economic development, development services, and community development. We reviewed facade projects selected and the adherence to the architectural design standards and available funds. Of the eligible facade improvements, those that are highlighted here are those that were selected. Here's a cost breakdown of what is being, um, done through the application. The developer has future plans to demolish the building on the northeastern corner. So all of the facade improvements relate to the primary building and to bakery donuts as well as, um, the parking for the entire shopping center. So the first 90,000 relates to painting and repairs to the walls for the primary building and bakery donuts, along with monument signage and sign, signage for bakery donuts as well. There's also a large dollar amount for repaving and restriping of the parking lot and new exterior lighting for the main building and bakery donuts. The total cost is 586,300. And the maximum contribution here will reach that $200,000 threshold for the city. And here's some visuals outlining what some of the repairs will be. As a reminder, this is a reimbursement program, so they will have to do the work and submit their receipts before being reimbursed. And they'll have 18 months to complete the project and submit their receipts before being reimbursed.
That's it. All right, thank you. Uh, there's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Klaus. Is there a discussion?
Aubrey, can you tell me again what you said was going to be demolished?
The building on the northeastern corner. Ultimately, they have plans to demolish that building. Demolition is not, um, an eligible improvement per this program. So whatever plans they have for that building, they're going to handle privately.
Mayor, I just want to take a moment to thank all of the residents that are part of the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Advisory Committee. Uh, they've been working extremely hard over the last eight, uh, months. And this is one of the programs that came out of that, um, hard work. This restaurant recruitment program and, uh, a beautification effort that's going to be forthcoming. And I want to thank you, Aubrey and, and Jennifer, uh, on your team for helping pull this together and execute this program so swiftly. Uh, and it's so exciting to not only see this application come forth, but to see us considering it tonight. In less than a year's time, I remember, uh, a couple of years back when we were talking about budget and we were trying to create a small business loan program that wasn't going to reach the corridor immediately. But this right now, we see, uh, because it was budgeted in the 22 year, is now reaching the, the people and businesses and the corridor itself. So thank you so much. Uh, and again, kudos to the team of the seven residents and, and, uh, former councilwoman, um, Cheryl Sterling was part of that committee. And, and of course, um, you know, mayor has been actively involved in attending some of those meetings and providing feedback and Sonya Brown Marshall on our planning and zoning. So I just think it's been a great team effort and it's just good to see this type of thing come to fruition.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Proton. And I should add that this was approved by both the advisory committee and the Economic Development Committee.
I concur with, uh, Mayor Proton Boni. Yeah, I've done excellent job in, uh, making sure that this process has moved quite, in my opinion, swiftly in comparison to some of the other projects in the past. And, uh, you saying that this is the first, uh, project that has been approved for the facade reimbursement program? And can, for those that are just tuning in, can you, um, just remind our residents and our stakeholders that this is a reimbursement program? How much they're getting reimbursed and how long that the process is?
Yes, this is for commercial properties located on Texas Parkway or Cartwright Road that were built prior to the year 2000. And it is for eligible facade improvements like painting the exterior, doing work on signage, exterior lighting, parking lot resurfacing, those types of improvements where the city will reimburse you for up to 75% of the cost. But the maximum reimbursement is $200,000. The applicant will need to apply with the city before doing the work and get it approved. And then it is a reimbursement. So you do the work. We make sure you've done the work and we reimburse you for the work that you've done.
And they have to complete the project within 12 months?
18 months.
18 months. Okay. Thank you.
And at that point, they'll be inspected and gone through the whole deal, uh, what we do for any build out, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I also want to echo what, uh, Mayor Proton Boni had talked about. I mean, we started this committee, and then within eight months, the resident has been working extremely hard. And also kudos to, uh, former council member, uh, Cheryl Sterling, and now Councilmember Riley, who's on there. That shows the progress. Those residents do show up at every single meeting. And sometimes, you know, you don't see the aftermath like you do with other committees. Because Small Business Committee and all that, it happens right away. But this has been a continuing process of what the corridor can do. And I want to take this time to thank you, Aubrey, and Jennifer, and Tim, uh, for your hard work and staying on top of this. That northwest corner building that you're talking about, I mean, it's been an eyesore in this city for as long as I can remember. And now finally, learning that it's coming down and it's coming through the process of this Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Committee and their work can't be any sweeter. Thank you. It's been a motion by Mayor Proton Boni, second by Councilmember Clauser. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Item 11C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, finding and determining public necessity for the acquisition of these simple interests in certain real property in connection with the public improvement projects known as the East Hampton Park Project and the East Hampton Circle Road Project.
Is there a motion?
Authorizing such acquisition by donation, purchase, or eminent domain of these simple interests in and to one tract or parcel of land needed for the project. Authorizing and directing the city manager to make a final offer to the owner of such interest. Authorizing payment of the cost of such purchase or eminent domain proceeding as applicable and associated costs for appraisal fees, title policies, and services. Recording fees, court costs, and expert witness fees in connection with the acquisition of these simple title in and to such tract or parcel of land situated in the James B. Murphy survey, abstract number 581 in Harris County, Texas. Said tract or parcel of land being located at the northwest corner of East Hampton Circle and Cathy Avenue, abutting and adjacent to the north line of East Hampton Circle and the west line of Ca- Cathy Avenue in Missouri City, and making certain findings related thereto.
Is there a motion?
Oh, moved.
Sir, a second?
Second.
So in a motion by Councilmember Riley, second by Councilmember Clauser. Jason, is there a presentation or?
I think he just said it all.
Actually, did. She did. I thought she was done.
Uh, this was, uh, uh, this parcel came up as a potential parkland acquisition when we were going through our master planning process, uh, over the past year. Um, we found that there was, uh, a lack of parkland in, in this area of Missouri City. Approximately 4,4,500 residents and less than an acre of parkland. Uh, so, uh, we feel this is, uh, a need and, uh, recommend that, that we pursue the acquisition of this property.
All right, is there a discussion?
Jason, can you remind, um, those that are present and those that are tuning in, uh, where exactly this particular property is?
Yeah, this piece of property is, uh, north of, uh, Highway 90 and east of San Houston Parkway on the intersection of, uh, Hampton and Cathy. Eight point, 8.34 acres. And this land will be used for parkland as well as a, um, uh, adjacent road project.
And what some divisions would it be, uh, closest to?
That Fawn Meadow, Fawn, Fonder Park?
Fonder Park.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion?
I just think it's important to note that this, uh, property is already zoned CF. And so, uh, this is the proper use of that, uh, that particular land. It wouldn't have to be rezoned.
All right, uh, there's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, second by Councilmember, uh, Clauser. There are no other discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Jason. Item number 12, our city council comments. We'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Riley. If we can keep to the comments somewhat, as we do with citizens, it'd be helpful. If we can keep it somewhere around three to three minutes if possible. Councilmember Riley.
Yes, want to first, I'll say welcome to, uh, Ms. Crystal Rome, uh, her first day on the job here at City Council. Uh, so thank you so much, Crystal, for joining us in Missouri City, in the City of Missouri, the Show Me City. Want to remind all of our voters to get out there and vote. Early voting is still going on from tomorrow to Friday. Uh, the last day to early vote from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Missouri City is one of the polling sites. And Election Day is on Tuesday, March 1st. And for those that live in District A, just want to remind those that are listening that District A is split between Harris County and Fort Bend County. If you live in Harris County, you do need to go to a Harris County voting site and vote. And those that live on the Fort Bend side of District A will need to vote in Fort Bend County. Uh, Mayor and Council, I attended the Texas Parkway Corridor Advisory Meeting. Uh, we were made able to make a lot of good progress. Um, I was fortunate and blessed to join the Freedom Walk in Community Park, which was the inaugural, uh, Freedom Walk. And that was a very emotional and touching, uh, emotional situation for me personally, uh, just because of what took place, uh, in this community many, many years ago and the lives that were affected. So, um, that was our inaugural, uh, inaugural event. So I'm looking forward to us doing this annually. Attended the Thunderbird, uh, Thunderbird North HOA meeting, got a chance to meet those wonderful people. The Sugar Land 95 Memorial Exhibit, uh, which was also, um, very near and dear to my heart since I was a part of that movement from inception, and they honored Reginald Moore, who was, uh, the lead person that led that charge to get those, uh, bodies, uh, honored. Want to say, uh, great job to Chief Bearzen in the Police Department with the flock cameras. Uh, we're seeing some improvements in reduction of crime. I want to personally wish my daughter Sherrell, who's my number four child, uh, she branched out and created her own radio show as a student of U of H, Go Cougs, and I'm very proud of her, so wanted to give her a shout out there. Sending, uh, condolences, uh, to, um, Stafford Municipal School District Board President, who is a friend of Missouri City who lost his father. So please, please keep that family in your prayers. Board President Christopher Caldwell. Lastly, I just want to say in my first 60 days of serving on council, it has been a joy. It also has been some growing pains. Uh, but I appreciate, um, all of the support from the community and everyone that has embraced me. And so as we continue on Black History Month, I want to encourage everyone to please be mindful of how we treat one another and to remember that how this month celebrates the legacy and the history and excellence of the African-American community. Thank you, Councilwoman Mayor, ends my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. Um, last week I was able to participate in Thurgood Marshall's PTO meeting to speak with the residents and the faculty and students about my upcoming poetry contest, which is going to be concluding on Wednesday. So if you know any youth that would like to participate, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for them to express their vision and concerns about the Texas Parkway Corridor. Oftentimes, we make those decisions without having input, and I believe that youth are our next generation of leaders, and it'd be great to have their input. Also, I do want to welcome Crystal, um, to the team and thank you for, um, choosing us, and I look forward to working with you in the future. Um, in addition, I just want to congratulate all of the teachers that were, um, acknowledged today for their efforts and their commitment to our youth. A special thanks to Enoch Brown and congratulating him, who's a native resident like I spoke earlier of. And it's just wonderful to see, um, people that are homegrown and actually getting brought up to be an effective member of our community. So that's wonderful, and I'm glad we are able to celebrate him. Um, also, I would like to tell my mom happy, um, birthday. She is a pillar of the community, and she emphasizes herself on increasing voter participation, feeding and encouraging thousands of residents daily with her small business known as The Greatest Barbecue. And she's often is, um, sought out for community advisory and different things of that. So I just want to thank her publicly for her dedication and commitment to our community. Um, I had my first meeting with the CDAC Committee, and so I just want to give kudos to Jennifer and her team for laying out the red carpet for me, making sure that, um, I understood everything that was being brought to me and that I was abreast to any future concerns. So I look forward to serving on that committee, and I thank you. Um, last but not least, um, Knowledge First Academy is hosting their first chess club meeting. Um, March 5th, it's a free event, and it will be held each and every Saturday and Sunday. So if you know any youth that are interested in joining a chess club, please have them reach out to Knowledge First, and they will actually be hosting the event from 10 to 1 o'clock each and every Saturday. I did say that I was finished, but I'm actually have a couple more points. Um, I do want to acknowledge, um, former Mayor Ford, Yolanda Ford, for her contributions to Missouri City for over 10 years of dedication. We cannot celebrate Black History without acknowledging the first African-American woman who's actually served in the mayor position. And so I also want to give her her flowers and acknowledge her for her wonderful efforts in moving this city forward. Um, also, the ladies and gents of the Heart Disease Awareness is having a walkathon on this Saturday, I believe. 10:00 AM, located at Hunter's Glen Park, 1340 Independence. So if you want to stop by where you're read and show that, um, it's a necessity to bring awareness to heart disease, which is one of the number one killers and silent killer at that. And so that was my not least, this is my last one for real this time. I was able to coordinate a huge donation with the Brothers of Judah Mason Lodge, number 28, and a variety of clothes, hygiene products, and we were able to distribute that to Fort Bend Promise, Fort Bend Family Promise. So, um, it's a busy two weeks, and I'm just able to continue to still serve and represent the community best of my ability. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Merle's.
Sure, thank you. There've been some wonderful Black History events throughout the month. We start off with art, artists and dance. We had the Freedom Tree Walk, where we had a keynote speaker. Uh, Mayor Proton Boni did an outstanding job really summarizing what that piece of land and what that history means to the community and to, to the whole entire country. So I've enjoyed those events, and I've asked the community to continue to participate in those events. On Saturday, I participated at the, uh, landmark facility where there was arts and dance, and I want to thank Troy and Charity Carter for all they're doing to promote Black History Month. Um, and then lastly, I want to thank, um, the Economic Development Committee. The TDC Committee, I forget what you call it, Jeff, read that, but the Texas.
It's a long name.
Yeah, it's a long name. Um, there's a lot of great growth and activity going on in this city to include Texas Parkway and Cartwright. The communities involved, Aubrey Team's, Aubrey's team is involved, and we're doing some great creative things like a patio program, like the restaurant, um, recruitment program, the facade program, and so much more. And this is because of us listening to our community, but our community being involved with us. So I want to thank everybody for what they're doing and moving the city forward. That's my.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Clauser.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Um, I, I want to congratulate Crystal and welcome you officially to the Show Me City, and, um, we have thrown you in and and you're going to be a great asset to us. I attended the second, uh, Missouri City Coffee with Leadership, met with many members of the community, and lots of business community members were there. Um, we also had some of our, uh, African-American artists there as well. Um, and so I look forward to the next one. Also, we had our Small Business Advisory Committee meeting, and I have to just say that this team led by Aubrey Nettles is so motivated and how proud I am of them. They show up, they stay engaged. Um, they're ready to always, um, pitch their ideas and make things happen. And so, um, I'm just so excited for that committee and also our small business community that reaps the benefits of all of the fruits of their labor. So thank you, Aubrey. February 12th, I had the opportunity to present a proclamation, um, to Ms. Lauren Anderson at the Fort Bend Dance Academy. She, um, hosts a dance, uh, camp each year. And so I presented a proclamation on behalf of Missouri City to her. She is the first principal African-American ballet dancer to join, um, the Houston Ballet, and so it was just, she was very shocked by this, uh, proclamation. It was an honor to present that to her. Afterwards, I joined my colleagues for the, uh, Freedom Walk, um, where Mayor Proton Boni gave a very, very moving keynote speech. And so, um, it, it was very touching, and so, uh, thank you so much for that, uh, Reverend Boni. Fire Station Tour, I want to thank Chief Partita. Um, we attended, um, and toured, got a sneak peek of the wonderful Fire Station 6 that, um, is in Parks Edge. And what I'm most excited about is not only the state-of-the-art building, but the technology, the new technology that we'll be able to utilize. So thank you so much for that tour. Had our Economic Development, uh, meeting, and we discussed many upcoming projects, um, for Missouri City, Texas. And I'm just really excited about where we're going and where we're headed. I also attended the Sugar Land 95, um, private event, and also Pet Supplies Plus Grand Opening. They are, uh, family-owned business, um, right on Highway 6. And what's really interesting is that you can take your pet in and actually give your pet a wash for yourself. So that concludes, uh, my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Emery.
If you've been down 1092, you notice that they're putting in the new medians. Saturday or Friday, I, we, uh, I did a drive-through with, um, Sasha and Jeremy to look at the, uh, progress they were making and where there might be areas where, uh, we were looking for some, uh, uh, workarounds by Tech Dot so that, uh, we can make sure that our residents and our businesses have, uh, good access in and out of their, uh, uh, their establishments. So, uh, I, I think it's going well. We're waiting for, I guess, for Tech Dot to tell us whether or not they're going to accept those, uh, workarounds that we, uh, we found. But, uh, I'm confident that Jeremy and Sasha will be able to bend some, uh, some arms and make sure that we get those, uh, workarounds in. Black History Month, I also, uh, uh, had the honor of, uh, walking from, uh, uh, Community Park to Freedom Tree, uh, and, uh, got a stirring, uh, uh, message from our Mayor Pro Tim. The, he was called the, uh, keynote speaker by, uh, Al Green, and if you can get Al Green to call you a keynote speaker, you know that you've done something. So, uh, it was, uh, it was really a great and stirring, uh, presentation and, uh, that, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Boni provided. We talked about, uh, the ribbon cutting for the, uh, Missouri City Business Pet Supply Plus. Aubrey, the mayor, Lynn, and myself provided a, uh, proclamation and also, uh, cut a ribbon for him. So, uh, if, if you've got a pet, I guarantee you, they've got something for every pet that you can think of. I think Aubrey's already bought half of the store out, so, um, it's, uh, well-stocked and, uh, it's, it's, uh, a great business for Missouri City. Also, the, uh, Fire Station 6 Tour, uh, by Chief Partita. Uh, again, another example of, uh, Missouri City moving first and moving forward. And, uh, also that, uh, how serious we are about, uh, the safety of our, uh, residents and businesses. You know, we have that station there now, and that really helps us cover, uh, a much larger area with, uh, some reduced, uh, uh, response time. So, uh, and we had coffee with the leadership. That's always, uh, a great event. You get to meet a, a number of, uh, of people that, uh, have, uh, businesses within Missouri City or maybe thinking about putting businesses in Missouri City, and this is a great way to, uh, network and, uh, uh, show, uh, individuals, businesses, uh, just what Missouri City is all about. So with that, Mayor, that's my, uh, comments.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, Saturday, February the 12th was a very, very, uh, moving day, uh, in our city. Uh, I'm most excited that I was able to join my colleagues and people from different walks of life, different races, different age groups, walking from Community Park to Freedom Park, uh, Freedom Tree Park, and, uh, just doing it in a, in a, in a spirit of unity and, um, in love. There's so much that seeks to try to divide us in this city. And for that moment, you know, for us all walking together in unity for a common purpose and good, you know, just felt right. And it felt good, and that's what I believe Missouri City represents and who we are as, as a collective. Uh, not just maybe, you know, some of the loudest voices that we hear. maybe, you know, some of the loudest voices that we hear don't represent, you know, the individuals that represent this great city. So thank you again, Mayor, for your leadership and pulling together this Black History Month celebration, not just day celebration, to allow us to participate. And I know that there are other activities to forth, that are forthcoming, but this has been a great, a great month to celebrate our history. Because as I say all the time, African American history, Black history is American history. We should never forget that. Also, on that day, prior to that walk, that Dignitaries for Freedom Walk, Congressman Al Green joined us. But before that, we had a meeting, Mayor Alakat, Councilwoman Klausert, myself, with Congressman Green, who wanted to visit with the individuals who helped spearhead the change from Confederate Drive to Prosperity Drive. And not only did he want to meet them, but he wanted to convene a meeting with other stakeholders in that area. And he made a personal promise that anyone who wanted to make a change from those offensive and demeaning street names to a new name, he would personally pay out of his own pocket the cost to cover that, you know, to bring about that change. And I thought that was huge because there was quite a few streets in there that need to come down and change. But for him to commit out of his personal proceeds to do that, and as you heard today during public comments, two of those streets after that meeting, Confederate South and Confederate Court, they got 80 and 90% of the people, over 80 and 90% of the people to participate. So this has been a good month. That was a good day. Moving on, Coffee with Leadership, I attended that. Always good. Let's keep that going. We had our PDI Committee meeting, our Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Advisory Committee meeting, and our CDAC meeting between this time and our last meeting. I want to remind, or not remind, but let everyone know, one of the things that our committee decided upon is on March 31st, we were going to have a town hall meeting as a committee, the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor Advisory Committee, to not only introduce the committee to the, to the public, to see all of these people behind, you know, the scenes that's been working so hard, but also to roll out and let everybody know all of the great things that we've, that we've been doing and the things that are forthcoming. And I know that people will be excited. So again, that's March 31st. Six o'clock PM, right, Aubrey? Thank you. Last few things, Fire Station 6 Tour went well. Thank you, Chief Partita and team. I attended Fort Bend County Judge's, KP George's Musical Celebration Diversity in Song Event in Richmond on behalf of City, Missouri City. And that was a well-attended event and was wonderful just to hear some of the great music and history behind it. Also, attended the Sugar Land 95 Exhibit Opening and Program with Councilwoman Klausert and Councilwoman Riley and City Manager Charles Jackson, and of course, our new CIO Cedric Cole. We had our, I moderated a Fort Bend County Candidate Forum, that was interesting, at the Landmark Community Center. That was great. I attended Chloe Joyner's book giveaway on yesterday. That was great. And I just want to thank again my colleagues, the Parks Board and the Parks Department for choosing to name this new park in Park's Edge, Randy Troxel. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. For me, some of the same events that I've attended as well, but there's a few that I'd like to talk about is I want to thank Parks Department for arranging the Freedom Park Walk that we had. Want to thank staff for coming out there, and I did see our Director of Financial Services and along with others that was there for the walk. So, you know, whenever we're out in the community, when we see staff level, you know, that's represent the city, it's always a great thing to, to, to see that and to be part of that. Mayor's Youth Commission met at HHC, so I want to take this opportunity to thank HHC and that leadership for allowing them to be there and kind of see their program. You know, they spend a lot of time, they had staff that was there in boots figuring out, you know, giving these opportunities for kids to see some of the programs that HHC hosts. Myself, Councilmember Klausert, Mayor Pro Tem Boni, as well as Charles Jackson were there. And they were giving out shirts to our kids. So it was great partnership. I know we have many partners, but HHC has been a great partner to City, Missouri City. I did have a chance to meet with Houston Humane Society, yeah, here and, and at the City Hall. They're going to be working closely with myself and Shashi Kumar had that opportunity to meet with them, and they're going to be working closely with that department and trying to look at some of the things that, that we needed to work forward. And we're excited about that. I did get an opportunity also to be at Sugar Land 95 to give a proclamation on behalf of the city for their four-year anniversary. We will have a couple of upcoming events. Our closing out of our Black History Month will be this coming Saturday. It'll be, starts around 4:00 p.m., hopefully till about 8:00 p.m. As if you go out of this hall, you'll see the big, the large painting that's been painted by Mr. Freeman, and we will unveil that at the City Hall on Saturday. There will be programs through here. There'll be an opportunity for you to come out and purchase these local artists, you know, their drawings and their paintings. So there'll be some opportunity here as well. As I close, I do want to take this opportunity to thank two areas. One, congratulations to Jason, Danielle, your entire team of Parks for winning a state-level recognition. We're going to have some celebration that's coming up, but yes. I mean, that was definitely an MCTX proud moment. And, you know, we hear that if you're new to Missouri City, if you hear Missouri City, you hear Parks. I mean, that is a fact. We have about 21 parks, hopefully 22 now, Mayor Pro Tem, with Troxel Park. We do take very pride in that, in that, in our parks, so we thank you. Lastly, want to congratulate and welcome Crystal Roan to the team, to City Secretary's Office. While we welcome you, I also want to take this opportunity to thank Vicki for her hard work for the past, I would say around Thanksgiving is when that opportunity came open. And with limited resources of staff, and she pulled it through and an election. We had an election during that November, so the datas and all of that was pulled through. So a lot of times, we don't give kudos to our staff, but Vicki, I can't see you, but thank you. That ends my report. Item number 13, our closed executive sessions, we don't, we don't have anymore. Item number 14, is there any further business? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Time is 8:42 p.m. Thank you all.